Not my intention.
We just give...
All right, let's, uh, flags salute. Flags allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Opening statement as per agenda, Jeff will roll.
Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Here.
Mr. Distefano is going to be joining us virtually. He's not here yet. Mr. Falcone is absent. Mr. Citric absent. Ms. Gulan?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Turkington?
Here.
Ms. Polachaino?
Here.
And Mr. Francis?
Here, all right. Is there a motion to go into executive session as per the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It all fit?
Aye.
Jeff, do you have to call it?
I do. Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Yes.
Mr. Distefano is absent. Mr. Falcone is absent. Mr. Citric is absent. Ms. Gulan?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Polachaino?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Let's move on down the road.
We are live.
We're live, all right. Is there a motion to reconvene?
I move.
I second.
All right, roll.
Seven of them.
Please.
Mr. Falconi, Schumer.
Here.
Mr. DiStefano. Mr. Falconi.
Here.
Mr. Citric. Ms. Goulan.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Turkington.
Yes.
Ms. Polachina.
Yes.
And Mr. Francis.
Yes, thank you, Jeff.
We begin to take it.
First item is approval of minutes for September 25th executive session and public meeting. You keep going and we do that.
Yeah, rock and roll.
Okay. I must apologize in advance for my superintendent's report tonight. Usually you get an efficient and quick report.
I just need a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Separate motion or?
Please.
A motion to approve the minutes.
I said rock and roll. You said we need a motion here. After six years, I should know this.
Does someone make it?
I motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes?
None.
Any discussion on approval of the minutes? Hearing none. Jeff, please call.
Ms. Falconi, Schumer.
Yes.
Mr. DiStefano is absent. Mr. Falconi?
Yes.
Mr. Citric is absent. Ms. Goulan?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Polachina?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes, thank you.
All right, now we're on.
All right. I'm going to skip the review of the agenda until the end of my report. I'm going to start off with the CUSAC report. As you know, the district last spring was fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel. Each of those five items have scores that are attached to various performances. We entered CUSAC knowing that we could not fail, we could not pass the instruction and program part of items because of our test scores, which I'll also review in a short period of time. We did pass fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel, and we did reasonably well on instruction and program. But as I said, it was impossible for us to pass that indicator. As a result of that, I need to put forth a corrective action plan, which must be submitted to the state. And the district has six months in which to act upon it. I'm going to briefly review it with the understanding that the six items I put forth here are directly from the report. I have to put forth a goal and a plan of action as how we're going to reach that goal. And my final report needs to demonstrate that we've accomplished it. Much of this stuff is curriculum related, and it's not rocket science. I'll give you an example. By February of 2024, all of the district's ELA curriculum will be revised so as to include 21st century skills. Now, our ELA curriculum had every component that was necessary on CUSAC, but the 21st century skills were changed and they were not updated. So updating that part of the curriculum, which is essentially a couple of hour job, is one of the goals. Similarly, the math curriculum will be revised so as to include 21st century goals. By February of 2024, all the district physical education curriculum will be revised so as to include technology standards and career education. Please understand, we're not revising the whole curriculum. We're simply adding those components that were inadvertently left out. By February of 2024, all of the district visual and performing arts curriculum will be revised so as to include the integration of interdisciplinary skills across grades and content areas. I will say this, I've been a superintendent for 26 years, and that one took me by surprise. I never heard of that. But we will, of course, take care of that. Items five and six relate specifically to our test scores, and we need to put forth a plan that will demonstrate improvement of the test scores. So item five is beginning immediately, the district will incorporate a standards-based review of strengths and weaknesses of student performance on all components of NJSLA testing. This has already begun. The state does give us good information on testing. It has been dispersed to the principals. The principals are addressing this in faculty meetings, and teachers are given individual reports on how their students did on each of the standards. And we believe that that will have a positive effect on things when coupled with number six, which says, beginning immediately, the district will incorporate skills-based instruction on all components of ELA, math, and K8 science. The skills being taught will be in coordination with the standards put forth by the DOE with the outcome of NJSLA test score improvement. So what we did is we broke down the standards into specific skills with the idea of making sure that those skills are addressed as part of the curriculum implementation. That pretty much is our improvement plan. I have to draw this up. It's about a hundred-page document that looks like this, which I will gladly do. But I just wanted you to know that those are the six goals that are incorporated into the improvement plan. And I will have that done to the county office most likely by the end of the week. The county superintendent will look at it. She will demonstrate whether it's approvable or not. If it's not, I'll go back to the drawing board. But I did have a discussion with her today on it. We should be okay. More complicated is this next item on the agenda, which is the Spring '23 state testing report. Our students are assessed on the following areas: Algebra I, Algebra II, geometry, the graduation exam for ELA and math, something that kids have to pass before they can graduate. Grade three, ELA and math. Grade four, ELA and math. Grade five, ELA and math. Grade six, ELA and math. Grade seven, ELA and math. Grade eight, ELA and math. And grade nine, ELA. There's no grade nine math because most of that is algebra. Before I delve into the scores, and I'm required by law to give these scores by subgroups. So I need to demonstrate, I need to share with you what Latino students are doing, what our black kids are doing, what our special ed students are doing, our ELL kids. It goes right down the gamut. But I need to explain something to you. Our test scores haven't been good. There are signs of improvement, but let me give you some demographic information. For example, at grade three, 104 students were assessed on the state exam. Some kids have accommodations, but exams are the same. Of those 104 kids, 47% of them were either special education students, 504 Plan students, or children who are learning the language. In grade four, 117 students took the assessment. Forty-two had an IEP. And the 504 Plan, another seven were ELL learners. 42% of those kids took the test with those components put into their performance. At grade five, 38% of the students were either IEP, which means they're special education, 504 students, which means they have significant accommodations because they have a diagnosis, and ELL kids. These are not all of our of kids who speak two languages or anything like that. These are kids who are learning English, English language learners. So in grade five, there were six students who took that assessment, meaning that 38% of the kids had the challenge of special ed, 504, or English language learning. At grade six and seven, the percentage was slightly less, 28% than 26%. At grade eight, it was 27%, and at grade nine, it was 49% of our kids had those circumstances to deal with. Now, somebody might say, oh, look at him. He's making excuses for our students. I'm not making excuses. I am sharing reality. There is a special education state assessment called the DLM. We're allowed to have 1% of our special ed students take that test. We can apply for a waiver and go higher. We usually do not. That means that about 98% to 99% of our special ed kids, regardless of their disability, majority of them have learning disabilities. They're taking the same test as that student who's going to be in AP classes when they're juniors and seniors. That's a tough load. The idea of testing our special education students and our regular education students with the exact same assessment, despite the fact that there are accommodations, to me is a tough one, and it always has been. The idea of English language learners taking the same state assessment is somewhat bizarre to me. Again, these are kids who are learning to speak English, and they don't take the exam in Spanish if they're learning, if they're going from Spanish to English. It's a tough one. So knowing that, I ask for your patience as I review these items because it's going to take me a few minutes to get this down. For the first time since I've been here, our kids have excelled in certain grade levels and subjects better than the state average. Grade three math, the state average was give me a second here. Let me get this right. On the graduation exam in ELA, our students were above the state average. That is a first since my time here in 2018. The average Paco score was 757. The average state score was 755. In grade three ELA, and this is due mainly to the foundations program that was put into effect a few years ago, our students scored 742 on average, and 739 was the state average. So we're beginning to see signs of progress. I firmly believe that the implementation of the skills as part of the curriculum will have a better effect on our future in terms of testing. But until that happens, we still have a long way to go. Example, grade nine, English Language Arts, 92 students took the test. Thirty-six of them partially met or did not meet expectations. The rest either approached or surpassed expectations. That's for the whole N. Our Latino population, 31 of those 92 kids were Latino children. 44% of them were at level one or two, which did not meet expectations or partially met expectations. The rest of them did okay in terms of approaching, meeting, or exceeding expectations. Our African-American students, smaller in numbers, seven of those students took that particular exam. Three of them were below expectations, and four of them surpassed expectations. IEP students. Seventeen students had IEPs who took the test. 70% of those students did not meet expectations. 23% partially met expectations. Only 5.9% approached expectations. And that's what I'm trying to tell you, that having special education children be part of the state assessment process presents a difficulty for us. Related to that is our high number of students who are classified. We have a significant number of 504 and IEP children, and that is our reality. We do the best we can to meet the needs of those kids. We have a ways to go, and when it comes to testing. Grade eight math. 99 students took the test. Only 17% of our kids were approached or above expectations. We had a difficult number, 51% not meeting expectations. Sometimes the subgroups have less than a few kids in it. They're not statistically reliable, so I am not going over those. English Language, grade eight. 120 kids tested. 31% did not meet expectations. 26% partially met expectations. 42% met or exceeded expectations. Grade seven, mathematics. 92 students took the assessment. 42% did not meet expectations. 56% approached or met or exceeded expectations. Latino children. 50% did not meet expectations. 50% approached, met, or exceeded. African-American students. Three students did not reach expectations. Five approached, met, or exceeded. Students with disabilities. 13 IEP students. 61% did not meet expectations. 38.5 approached expectations. Six ELL students, English language learners. Four of them did not meet expectations. Two of them partially met expectations. The pattern tends to be relatively consistent. As we move on, in English Language Arts, grade seven, 89 students took the assessment. 41% did not meet expectations. The remaining 59% approached, met, or exceeded. Hispanic or Latino students. There are 25 of them. 14 did not meet expectations. 11 of them did. Eight African-American children. Three did not meet expectations. Five of them did. Students with disabilities, 13. 86% did not meet expectations. 12%, I'm sorry, 14% did. English language learners, three students. Two did not meet expectations. One did. Mathematics, grade six. 110 students involved. 41% of the students did not meet expectations. 59% of them approached, met, or exceeded. Latino children. 45% did not meet expectations. The remainder approached, met, or exceeded. 24 students at that grade level have IEPs. 13 did not meet expectations. The remainder approached, met, or exceeded. Five ELL students in that cohort. Three of them did not meet expectations. Two of them did. Grade six, Language Arts. 108 students. 46% did not meet expectations. The remainder approached or met expectations. Latino children. 49 students in grade six. 26 did not meet expectations. The remainder did. Seven African-American children in that one. Two did not meet expectations. Five of them did. IEP students. 24 students in that cohort. 60% did not meet expectations. The remainder either approached or met expectations. Grade five, mathematics. 111 students. 47% did not meet expectations. The remainder approached, met, or exceeded. Latino children. 50% did not meet expectations. The remainder approached, met, or exceeded. IEP students. There are 29 IEP children in that grade level. 22 did not meet expectations. There are six ELL, English Language learners. Four of them did not meet expectations. The other two approached. Grade five, Language Arts. 108 students. 41% did not meet expectations. Latino children. 30% did not meet expectations. There are 32 Latino children in that grade. Almost 69% did meet expectations. I'm proud of that one. IEP. There are 29 students in grade five with an IEP who took the test. 71% did not meet expectations. The remainder approached. Grade four, mathematics. 117 students. 34% did not meet expectations. The remainder approached or met expectations. A few students exceeded expectations. 43 Latino children in that group. 18 did not meet expectations. The remainder either approached, met, or exceeded. That's a very good showing on part of those children. Please understand, I am also not counting the performance of students who are economically deprived in terms of family income. We're running at approximately 36% of our children eligible for reduced and free lunch. I'm not incorporating them into the idea of the challenges that we face when it comes to testing, but nevertheless, that is a challenge. Grade four ELA, 117 students. 37% did not meet expectations. 63% approached, met, or exceeded. Latino children. 19 did not meet expectations. 24 did. IEP. There are 36 students in grade four with IEPs. 50% did not meet expectations. The remainder approached, met, or exceeded. There are seven ELL students. Four of them did not meet. Three of them did. Grade three mathematics. 104 students. 24% did not meet expectations. The remainder got either approached, met, or exceeded, and that's a pretty decent showing. Latino population. 13 students out of 36 did not meet expectations. 23 did. IEP students. There are 38 students with disabilities. 44% did not meet expectation. The remainder did. There are eight ELL students in grade three assessment. 52% did not meet expectations. The remainder did. I've gone over the graduation proficiency assessment results at a previous meeting. I believe that I've made a point, A, our test scores need to be improved, B, there are some reasons why we are challenged under state testing, and we will continue to do our best to demonstrate improvement. Interestingly, on CUSAC, they rate you on points for ELA academic progress. At the K-12 level, we scored 4.5 out of 7.5 on that, demonstrating that our scores have been improving. Mathematics progress, K-12, we received a score of 5.7 out of 7.5, again demonstrating that our performance is improving. We still have a ways to go. We are working very hard to try to make sure that our scores improve. Board members, any comments?
Everybody looking at me?
Forgive me for being maybe a little ignorant with this, but if we're not doing well on these tests, should our curriculum be looked at?
Our curriculum has been reviewed, broken down, standardized, compared to the standards. Skills have been developed based on the standards. It has nothing to do with curriculum.
What we have to do now is what he said. We have to figure out what standards the kids are strong on, and we don't have to keep reteaching, reteaching, reteaching. We have to not reteach, and we have to go and teach the skills that we need to improve upon. That's why everybody should be looking at where the kids fell and then making the lessons based on that.
It's a good question, though, Ms. Jeff.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Anyone who's been in meetings for the past six years, I reference Lean on Me a lot. And so we have a large population of people who are learning English. Is there anything that we could do at night to get the parents in to teach? Because they did that in the movie too, right? I don't want to run the school district like. But it makes sense, right?
Joe Clark was a cool guy.
Yeah, I mean, my thought process is, is the faster these students can learn English, and if it helps to have their parents learn too, then the faster they can be caught up. And I don't care about the test score. I care about the kid, right? Being able to function and learn and be able to communicate and all the stuff that goes with it, so.
I don't know if you remember last year, the Latino Club sponsored an open house. They had all sorts of help groups there. It was a great night. We were able to touch base with a significant number of our parents at that night. To instruct parents in English is a challenge for us financially, because it doesn't happen for free. That's one problem. Second problem is, and please understand, I'm talking reality here. I mean, no, I love our new population, and I would never, ever criticize anything about it. But many of these people have made a trek from all sorts of places in South America and Central America. They are not sure they can trust institutions at this point. Many of them are still in a survival mode of trying to do their best. Many of them are working two jobs. Both parents work. It's not easy for them, for us to say, come learn English on Wednesday and Thursday night. It's hard. And that's the reality of our situation. I've been nothing but impressed by our by our changing population. My hat is off to them, but developing trust is what we need to do before we start some of the other stuff. Thomas, I'm going to put you on the spot. You fit into some of the categories I've talked about. Any advice for the adults on this? This is Thomas. Thomas is one of our student representatives. He has gone through the mill, and he is doing magnificently as I am writing a letter to try to make sure that his talents are put forward to any college or choice of opportunity he'd like to do in the future. Any comment or anything I said? Any comment, anything I said, sir?
Well, I have to say that I really know how, how does it feel when you come into like a new country, and English is your second language, because you don't really know what you're doing, what challenges you have to face. I had to learn English like in three months, and it was really hard. And now I feel like very lucky, because I can speak it like fluently. But it's really hard, and I know like, some of the kids, they, they're, they're still like struggling with learning it, and I know all of us, we have the, we, we would like to have the same opportunities. And it's really sad to see that some of them are, are looking like for a solution to have like their goals done. So it's really good that we're looking all together to find like help, looking for help.
Spend one minute telling me about translation by Thomas on the television.
Yeah, so I have my own TV show on LTV, and I was in like the morning announcements where I was translating all the morning news to all the students who were like Spanish speakers.
This young man is unbelievable, and I am so proud of him. Keep in touch.
Appreciate it.
All right. Tonight I told the public and the board that I would put forth some information with regard to a Plan B, given the fact that the referendum was not successful. Please understand that Plan B does not cover $27 million. It is a plan that allows us to chip away at that while we decide what to do in the future. One of the options, of course, is to have another referendum in the future. But some of the stuff we can accomplish through grit. Those of you may recall last year, when the state health benefits plan that we paid for went up so much, the state gave us a, an indication that we could raise the tax levy from 2% to 3.65%. We did not use that last year, but it is our intent to use the 3.65% tax levy on this upcoming budget that we will begin working on in the very near future. In terms of the referendum items, please understand that I'm not talking, I didn't do this, Mr. Hollenbeck and I did this as a, as a combo. We have to prioritize our projects, and the two, the four projects that are of the utmost prioritization have to do with the two roofs, one at Tulsa Trail, one at the high school, and the two oil tanks, one at Durbin, and one at the middle school. We have applied for a rod grant that was done through Jeffrey's efforts, in which the district would have to utilize $600,000 of its capital reserve, and the state would offset that partially. And that would allow us to do roof projects at the high school on salvageable roofs that, when worked upon, would give us another 20 years of, of, of life. That doesn't fix the roofs that needed the most, and we, we're still working on that. But the idea of saving what's savable is something that we could do with the rod grant money that will be coming sometime in the future. Mr. Hollenbeck, please do not hesitate to jump in if you feel.
Yeah, so the state is, unfortunately, is part of a bureaucracy, there are a number of hoops. The state has allocated the money to us, they need to go through the process with the treasury to actually fund the projects and move that money forward. As Art mentioned, there are a number of technologies out there that restore and extend the life of roofing materials, but that can only be done on roofs that are just at the end of their warranty period, and are in shape enough that you would invest in. So the cost to do something which is called a fluid applied membrane is about 40% of the cost to actually have to rip off and completely repair a roof. About 80%, 75% of the roofing material at the high school has to be torn off. It's like your roof at home. You have a roof, it needs to be repaired, many times you put another layer of shingles over the top before you have to tear down and go down to the deck. The high school roof has had multiple layers of roofing materials put on it over time. 75% of that roof has to come down to the deck, and because there are new energy regulations, it means that the existing insulation can't be used, the new insulation has to be much thicker, and new membrane put down. The state rod grant money will not cover those costs, all right? It will cover restoration, so we'll have to go through other means to come up with the money for the tear-off, but at the same token, we have an obligation to protect the taxpayers' assets. So rather than allowing the membranes that can be saved from getting into the, we have to tear off, and the cost for that goes even higher, we think it's a prudent investment to invest and save those parts of the asset that are salvageable and savable, and get a 20 to 25-year warranty on those parts of it. That will not happen based on the state's most recent estimates until this summer at
One of the former superintendents here was, in many ways, an outstanding educator and leader, and under Dr. Trelkell's leadership, the district purchased a significant amount of property. Some of it parallels or borders Lakeside Boulevard, other land goes deep up the road where the senior center is and where the fields are. Jeffrey and I will be meeting with real estate, with a real estate agent who has expressed an interest in helping us look at that, ascertain its zoning requirements. That's items that we will most likely be looking to sell over periods of time, for the idea of gaining some income, which can then be applied to some of our other priorities. More to follow on that in the future. We met this morning, and the call to the real estate agent who has expressed an interest will be out, will be going out this week. Want to talk about the $800,000 application for?
Stabilization aid.
That I always mix up with sustainability.
That's totally right. So the state has, through its normal budget, has set aside a pool of money for approximately 97 school districts that were impacted by legislation signed into law back in 2016 that reduces their state aid. Hopacong is one of those school districts that will see 90% of its state aid taken back by the district over a five-year period. We've already gone through four years, we have one more year remaining. That state aid lost to us is a total of $8 million over those five years. So when people ask, "Why is the district in the financial position it's in?", the state is taking back that state aid, and that is a recurring loss. Once that $8 million is gone, it doesn't come back. What they've realized is that the five-year phase-in period for some districts was very, very difficult. So they've offered something called stabilization aid. 64 school districts have applied for this stabilization aid. The total amount that the state set aside in its budget is 25 million. One school district out of the 64 applied for $26 million in stabilization aid. So what it means is the state is going to prioritize and prorate those applications. They, the stabilization aid is meant to help school districts with unexpected costs that have been incurred since its budget was developed and approved in March and April of last year. One of the areas that we have gotten hit very hard with is homeless students. We are under federal law, if a student resides in Hopacong and becomes homeless, and then moves somewhere else to live temporarily, we are responsible for paying the cost of educating that student outside of our school district. The parents have the choice, decide where they want that child to enroll, either in the school district where they're temporarily living, or here in Hopacong. We're responsible for paying for the cost of the transportation, and paying for the tuition for those students to attend those other school districts. We currently have five students that fall into those categories. Transportation is actually the most costly part of it. It costs almost $30,000 a student to transport them back and forth, because you have to use private contractors to do it. You don't send a 54-passenger bus to Parsippany Troy Hills to pick up a student and bring them back to Hopacong every single day. The tuition ranges from anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 per student. So we put in for those costs, because those were costs that were not budgeted. And you know like your checkbook at home, right? You have your household budget, and if additional expenses come up, something has to get cut out of the budget. As a school district, 85% of our costs are tied up in salaries and benefits, tied to the people who do all of the educating and the work. So we've put in for almost $800,000 in a variety of costs. We put in for almost that amount last year, and we got $134,000. That $134,000 last year went to replace the underground oil tank at the high school that failed. You know an underground oil tank that fails can't be utilized. $134,000 from the state offset $680,000 was the actual cost to replace that oil tank. That other $540,000 had to come out of district capital reserves and operating budget. So there isn't a lot of room in our budget for the rainy day. When something goes wrong, and it's something big that isn't covered by insurance, those costs have to be borne by our existing budget, and other things have to be cut. And I'll give you two great examples of that that have also happened this year. We had a hot water heater, storage tank leak at the high school. If you've been into the gymnasium, you see that the entire floor outside of the gymnasium hallway had to be ripped up. Fortunately, that's covered by liability insurance, all right, by our homeowner's insurance. The cost for that project is almost $85,000, and it's not doing anything fancy except restoring it back to what it was. Several days ago, the high school, a notice went out last month that there was a chance that the high school may be closed for a day due to a water main leak. The water main leak occurred on our side of the water meter. It flooded a vault that hoses our pumps and everything for the water line. We were able to restore the water line, but all of the damage, the erosion, and everything that happened is not covered by insurance. So the vault itself has to be rebuilt. Notice there's cones around that area by the loading dock at the high school, so no one parks there, because I don't need a sinkhole to open. Those are costs that'll have to come out of our capital or our operating budget. And just like at home, you see your car insurance premiums go up, you see your homeowner's insurance premiums go up. We are part of a private collective of school districts and municipalities around the state that is self-insured, we insure ourselves. We have been notified to anticipate 26% premium increases for next year. Our premiums for liability insurance, automobile insurance, risk management insurance is almost $850,000 a year. Increase that by 25% for next year, and you understand, just like at home, with inflation in your costs, our costs are kind of magnified when we look at some of those things. So every opportunity that we have to look for grants, to look for some stabilization aid, we had a conversation about reaching out to our legislatures. It's something we continue to do on a regular basis. You know, during Dr. Piccarillo's time here, and Dr. D. Benedetto's time here, we've looked at consolidation options and consolidation grants. But as you understand, or may not be aware of the law, the law requires that any school districts that consolidate in the state of New Jersey, the vote must be put out to the taxpayers of all of the municipalities that would be affected by the consolidation, and the majority of the homeowners in every municipality have to vote yes. So I'll give you an example. Twenty-plus years ago, I worked in Belvedere. Belvedere School District is made up of Hope, Harmony, White, and Belvedere Townships. That merger back then would have made one school district K-12. Hope, Harmony, and Belvedere's taxes were going to go down as a result of the merger. White's taxes were going to go up, and the homeowners in White Township voted down the merger, and 20 years later, there all remain independent school districts. So unless things change on the legislative front, we are where we're at. The state aid cuts will continue for next year. All of the legislature in the state of New Jersey is up for the reelection, I've sent it to this board. There is not the stomach for them to increase taxes or change the funding formula in an election year. So those cuts are going to move forward next year, and we're going to have to continue to do everything we can with reduced state aid to be able to tackle our capital needs and offer a thorough and efficient education to all of our students.
Thank you, Jeff.
It's easy.
Just another day in the office. We'll keep working hard.
Jeffrey put forth an idea today about using the cooperative as a purchasing agent for other districts that might be interested in bus parts, buses, drivers, et cetera. We'll be meeting with the cooperative to ascertain the possibility of that. That is something that, for lack of a better term, finder's fee we would get as a district for using a co-op as the purchasing agent. Another idea that we're discussing has to do with our preschool. As you noted, the district has free universal preschool for families. We continue to expand that program. The possibility under consideration has to do with bringing all of those children back into district. Right now, there are two classes at Durbin, the rest are outsourced with a provider. Unfortunately, the decision on that has to be made immediately, because the budget for next year is due on November 15th. However, that's an idea that might be used in the future. The idea of bringing all those classes back to district would allow us to keep a larger portion of the grant. It would mean a lot more work, but that's, that's what we do. Related to that would be a reconfiguration of the district. Again, that's something that's going to take a year to talk about, but that would mean that Durbin and Tulsa would have different, and the high, and the middle school, Durbin, Tulsa, and the middle school would have to have different class grades in it, and that's something that needs to be discussed with the public and things like that. It's not a major change. For example, Durbin would be preschool in K, Tulsa would be one and two, middle school would be three through seven. But that's, that's not something that's going to happen in the immediate future. I'm very hopeful about the Lakeside properties, and we'll see where we go with that, and I will continue to upgrade, update the board on that process. Again, any questions on the part of board members? Jen?
Nope, I don't have any questions.
Item five, I'll be having a single-issue meeting in the near future to discuss the future of the district, something I want to make sure that I give the public an opportunity, A, to hear, and B, to provide input. That meeting will most likely take place in November. On September 9th, we had our in-service. We spent a significant number of hours talking about teaching ELL students in the classroom. We had training for the Wonders Program, which is the new reading series, and we had planning and setup in the schools as part of that. We will have another in-service on, in January, and plans are being made for that right now. Tonight, there's a resolution to finalize the board goals, approve the board goals. They're outlined in the, in the agenda for you. I'd like to review the agenda very briefly right now, if you'd be so kind. I have a number of students to recognize this evening for various accomplishments. There'll be a chance for parent-teacher organization reps to discuss. Public comment. Finance items are pretty much pro-former as usual. No surprises there. Personnel, significant hiring of paraprofessionals, also some custodians. We have a termination and a resignation added to that. Item K has to do with the spring sports advisors and coaches. Item L has to do with course approval and reimbursement. Item, item M has to do with a significant number of substitutes. We're desperate, we're in desperate need of subs, and we are very happy that we have people, everything from custodian to paraprofessional sub, to teacher subs. Travel and professional development, as we always have. Please note that some of those items come out of grants that we have. For example, Mr. Zimmerman's conference came out of a Title II grant. We have second reading on policies on sick leave and school threat assessment teams. We continue to have significant numbers of students with challenges related We continue to have significant numbers of students with challenges related to mental health, and that is why there is a significant number of home instruction items on the We have resolutions regarding a comprehensive maintenance plan. Item C on page ten is the board goals, which I combined items, the first and the fifth. We have co-op items as usual. Continue to get new districts, and we're doing very well this year. And a significant agenda with regard to family leave. Item B, I read the corrective action plan to you. I need the board to approve that tonight so I can get it to the state. Again, another substitute para and teacher. The HIB report needs to be approved. It states in the agenda that there's no HIBs this month, but I got one literally Friday afternoon, and I wasn't in Friday afternoon, so I didn't get it till today, and it's on the agenda. It's on the addendum, rather. Item F is important. We need some wonders training. That's the reading series. We need some live training, and by having a half-day on November thirteenth, we can provide it K through five. So, I'm asking the board to approve a half-day for K-five students. Actually, be K-seven students.
Yeah.
Thank you. I knew you were gonna say something.
Yeah, I might.
So, that is important to us. Item G has to do with a situation regarding board members, and that's our agenda. Should I continue, sir?
Yeah, let's recognize Brandon because he's been sitting here all night, and he probably wants to go home.
Brandon Omahoney, we commend you for being a hard-working student who adheres to classroom rules, has a strong academic background, and it's evident by the achievement that you've put forth during the month of September twenty-three. You're in grade eleven, sir. I congratulate you on being recognized. There are a hundred-plus eleventh-grade students, and it's very nice to be selected as one for achievement. Is your speech ready? You both did good work.
Thank you.
Photo box.
Picture, picture.
Don't you leave without a picture.
Sneak into the background.
Brandon, you are not required to stay the rest of the meeting.
Ken has to stay up.
You're welcome.
Should I continue, sir? All right, item C. The following students were chosen as a Paccon High School student of the month for outstanding performance in September of twenty-three. Grade eight, Gianna Santa, with honorable mention Jacob Leos. Grade nine on this month. Grade ten, Nicholas Hubers, honorable mention Alexander Polichko. As stated, grade eleven, Brandon Omahoney. Grade twelve, Daniella Cornacci, honorable mention with Christina Fejerman and Phoenix Sherlock. The following students were chosen as a Paccon High School scholar-athletes of the month for outstanding performance in September. Boy soccer, Thomas Diarco Jr., and girl soccer, Janie Henderson Sr. Very good.
Now, is there a motion to approve item seven? And if we needed to, the one before six, but I think we got it. Item seven.
Second.
All right, Jeff, please call a roll on seven. Any discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, Jeff, please call a roll.
Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano?
We're just talking about item seven. What about item six?
Item six, we already approved.
I had to be listed as absent or...
Yeah, you are listed as absent for item six.
Okay. Seven of the board votes, only item number one of the board votes may want to revise that because it has...
To reflect October thirty. Thank you, sir. Your vote on that item?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
Mr. Citrich? Is absent, Ms. Gulad?
I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Colachena?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes, thank you. Parent-teacher organizations, item eight. Anybody wanna jump in?
I can update us on the high school PTO. We just had our homecoming dance. There were two-hundred-and-eighty-eight students. Wow. Grade eight through twelve. It was awesome.
It was awesome.
There was like two-hundred-and-fifteen, two-hundred-and-fifteen kids pre-bought, and then so many came the night of.
That's awesome.
And it was nice because they could bring a date from outside of the school district, so that was also a hit. We had so many staff members attend and volunteer and help out. The student council also worked in conjunction, and they planned this beautiful fairy tale setting, and parents bought items off of an Amazon wish list, and the gym was transformed. Like, you really could have had like a nice affair there. It looked beautiful.
We did.
We did. No, and I'm saying, you know, we could have rented it out. We can make money.
Put that on the list.
There we go. And the kids looked so nice. They came in all dressed up, and the music was great, and it felt good to host it at home, so it was a success. Kids loved it, parents loved it, so hope to do that more often. Thank you. You're welcome. That's all I got.
All right, anyone else?
Paccon Chiefs Cheerleading will be having their annual purse bingo December first at St. Jude's Church. Pre-sale tickets will be going on sale soon.
All right, item nine's public comment. My man, is anybody signed up on there?
No one.
All right, thank you. You want me to keep rolling?
Yes, sir, no, you're good.
All right, item ten is finance. Item eleven is personnel. I'm gonna make my way down to where I have to stop. Item twelve is travel and professional development. Item thirteen, policy regulation. Item fourteen, students and services. Fifteen are the resolutions. Sixteen is the cooperative. Is there a motion to approve all of those items in their entirety?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on any of those items?
So, the motion is to move items eleven A through sixteen D.
Yes.
Motion by...
Nicole, what about ten?
Ten.
Sorry, ten A.
Thank you.
Through sixteen D, seconded by...
Wow.
Yeah, any discussion on that note? Jeff, call a roll, please.
On the motion, ten A through sixteen D by Ms. Falcone Schubert, seconded by Ms. Gulad. Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano?
You got muted?
Is that mandatory policy or not?
It is.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
Mr. Citrich is absent, Ms. Gulad?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Colachena?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. Okay, on the addendum, we have items A, B, C, D, E, and F. Everyone can check those out when you have time. Item G, I have to read out loud, which I will do right now, so bear with me, it's a little long. We'll roll through it together. Item G, whereas the board is responsible for protecting and maintaining the integrity of its operations, and whereas the board has an obligation to ensure that the Paccon School District is well-run, and whereas the board recently was made aware of alleged comments and actions by board member Philip Di Stefano that potentially jeopardized the operations of the board, and whereas the School Ethics Act was enacted to ensure and preserve public confidence in the integrity of the elected and appointed school board members and school administrators, NJAC six A twenty-eight one dot one. This isn't easy. And whereas the School Ethics Act further provides that board members can find their board action through policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and will not administer the schools but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run, NJSA eighteen A twelve dash twenty-four dot one. And whereas the School Ethics Act further provides that board members are prohibited from taking private action that may compromise the board, NJSA eighteen A twelve dash twenty-four dot one. And whereas the alleged comments and actions by board member Di Stefano, if proven true, may violate the School Ethics Act and/or Code of Ethics for the school board members. And whereas, the board cannot and would not make an ultimate decision as to guilt or innocence, but recognizes that the appropriate place for such a determination is the School Ethics Commission, which can weigh the relevant evidence and testimony. And whereas, the board takes the alleged conduct seriously, which it hopes to have addressed in the appropriate forum to allow the board to focus on the district's business while maintaining the confidence of employees, confidence of its employees, and the public. Now, therefore, be it resolved that this board empowers and directs the board president to file an appropriate complaint with the School Ethics Commission with regard to the alleged violations of the School Ethics Act and/or Code of Ethics for school board members with the assistance of the board's attorney. Be it further resolved that the board directs and empowers the board president to file this action with regret that such action is necessary, but believes it is left with no other alternative in order to have this matter reviewed and concluded while maintaining the public's confidence in the board. So, at this point, is there a motion to approve the addendum?
I move. Second.
Okay, any discussion on the addendum? Hearing none, Jeff, please call a roll.
Motion to approve addendum items A through G. Motion by Ms. Turkington, seconded by Ms. Gulad. Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano?
No.
Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
Mr. Citrich is absent, Ms. Gulad?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Colachena?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. All right, item seventeen is board member comments, starting with Jackie.
Thank you, everybody. I always have so much to say, and honestly, I don't have anything to say tonight. Well, of course I do. I always have. I take that back. I think that our Board of Education has worked hard to try to do the right thing as a whole, and I know that we will still continue to move forward with the right agenda in mind, with the right people coming onto the board in January. However that election goes, I'm thrilled with the candidates that are out there, and I'm looking forward to the positive things that have happened for the majority of this board to continue. And I know that Jeff and Art work really hard to make the school district work, and don't let the test scores dismay you because they are a reflection of the demographics of our schools, and I think it's important to understand the demographics of our schools and know that there are so many positive things that happen along with all of that. And our programs that we have in place for those students are phenomenal, and they really do work hard to make those happen. So, don't be dismayed by the numbers. Take into consideration what makes up those numbers, and really look forward to the positive things that, and even look in the past, the steps that we've made to make those improvements, and we continue to move forward in a very positive way. So, thank you all for listening, and I don't let the three-to-seven thing freak you out because that's not happening yet. I saw a little concern about that comment. That's a long time down the road, and it might not happen, so don't let that be a concern for you. Right? I saw that. But seriously, I know that we have the right leadership in place, and this board will continue to make smart, intelligent decisions for the betterment of our schools and our children, most importantly, our schools. So, for nothing to say, I have a lot to say. Thank you very much. Have a good night. And just think, I only have two more meetings to make comments in it. I'll save the long one for December.
All right, thank you, Jackie. Jen?
Ditto. Thank you for coming, and have a happy and safe Halloween.
Thank you for everyone attending. Thank you again for Jeff and Art, for the work that you guys do that I don't think people realize how much goes into behind the scenes. So, thank you guys again, and happy Halloween.
Thank you, Ms. Gina.
I am usually a glass-half-full person, but the past two months has been very hard to be glass-half-full. And if Jackie, you were saying that the audience is worried about the grade switches. This is me speaking as a person who lives in town, a teacher who has kids in school. I would be worried. You get what you pay for, and that's the bottom line. We can work our tails off, but you get what you pay for, and it's sad to me that we are trying to do what's best for kids up here, and that means investing in their future by investing in our town and having to pay more money to make sure that there isn't duct tape on windows and holes in roofs and...
More duct tape.
You know, being able to like see through underneath doors, and it's a shame to me that we have to whittle down our list to two roofs and two oil tanks. And to me, that's really unacceptable. If it were up to me, I'd double the referendum because that's what school districts are supposed to do and towns are supposed to do. You're not supposed to be able to run a company, your home, on a two-percent budget increase. You have to take out a loan, and you have to do what's right with that money, and then make a plan so in twenty years, you can make your next big investment. So, I am completely disappointed in how the vote went. I am completely disappointed in the people who voted no because saying no is not investing in yourself, not investing in the kids, not investing in your town. And I put a lot of time and effort into this town, and I don't ask for anything in return, just that people do what's right, and it's completely upsetting to me. And like I said, I'm a glass-half-full person, but I haven't been full this month, and I hope that we can turn things around for the kids' sake because it's not fair. And I would be worried. There's things that we can do, but I would be worried because we're facing more cuts, and a two-percent tax increase is not going to fix the duct taped windows. It's not even on the list for the referendum. So, sorry, this meeting was a bummer, but that's how I feel.
Let's take it down to Phil, if he wants to opine from wherever he is.
Not really.
I'm gonna boost my microphone here as much as I can. Go ahead.
Well, first off, thank the public for coming to the meeting. I'm very sorry, obviously, that the board has decided to assign a sanction, some kind of a sanction effect on my person, frankly. I do believe that I was in the right, quite honestly, in doing what I had done. Everything I had done was, in fact, informed the public of the reality of the referendum. I know that we really needed a referendum, but the referendum was frankly too large, in my opinion. But that's even besides the point. I would definitely support a referendum, assuming that it was well researched and we've gotten all of our ducks in a row, quite frankly, and I just didn't see that that was the case. Certainly wish everyone a great Halloween tomorrow. Please, you know, be careful, be safe, more than anything else. That's the most important thing. One more thing, well, I'll send an email about the rest. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, big election coming up in town, I think. When it comes to the top of the House, I think it's super important that everybody gets out and votes, right? It'll be refreshing to have people in office who are advocates of the school and partners with the school. We simply just don't have that now, so Jen, good luck. Yeah, get out and vote, and get out and vote for the school board. I'm on the ballot. Three other people are on the ballot, but again, to echo Jackie's sentiment, I'd be thrilled with any combination of those four people, so I'm looking forward to what next year brings. Like Nicole said, we're not in a good place, but I think if all goes well in this upcoming election, I think a lot of people who we can partnership in building this back.
Yeah, just go out and vote November seventh. You have four candidates on your Board of Education ballot. They are all fantastic, fantastic candidates. I'm gonna have a hard time, like a really hard time. So, go out and vote November seventh. Just remember that this board really cares about the kids. The majority of the... The majority of this board cares about the kids, and that's it. Thanks for coming.
All right, couple of things. Maybe this is venting, maybe this is real, I don't know. I think it's said that we have to use the words "politics" and "kids" in schools in the same paragraph sentence, however you want to call it. You know, six years ago, when I joined the school board, I had no clue what went on behind the walls of a school, right? Looking at a budget presentation, you're like, this doesn't make any sense. All right, let me join the school board. Here we are, six years later, still trying to figure out how all this stuff works. I think that there's a lot of work to do in the state, things that are out of our hands, that are above our level. I can tell you that when I'm not on the board, I'm going to write a letter every week, right? You can do more in that seat than you can in this one. But it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me how school districts could be penalized and have money ripped away from them in a short period of time when the only people that get affected by that adversely are the students within the buildings. Another thing that's on my mind right now is, and you can't, the problem with this stuff is you can't go backwards, right? I can't go back 30 years and say, had there been a maintenance plan for the facilities of the Hopaccon School District, we wouldn't be sitting here today asking the community to approve millions and millions of dollars to fix things that, quite frankly, you wouldn't even have known had gotten fixed. So when you think about a referendum, you think about what happened on the vote and all that stuff, you know, you have a town or school board that comes out and says, hey, let's get the turf field, let's get the shiny stuff, let's get, you know, cool things, tech labs and all this stuff. And we weren't even doing that. We weren't even coming close to that. We're talking about water heaters that are blowing up and roofs that are caving in, right? And I think that when you look at a vote and you have 25% of a community's population come out and actually say yes or no, that's sad, right? And I hope this is video recorded, and I hope that everyone goes and tells their friends, so the guy at the school board's telling me it's sad, it is, right? People have to get off the couch, go to the place, vote, and I couldn't think of anything I'd rather vote for than kids, right? So that they have a place that they can go to and learn, right? We talked about some things tonight that, you know, if you have a motion, it's pouring out, right? Whatever the statistics are, I'm not going to say them because I don't know exactly what they are. A large portion of our student population doesn't speak English, right? So you think about how hard that is. You think about what this guy's been through, right? And I applaud him for getting through it and excelling, but you think about how hard that is. Try doing that in a room that's 30 degrees, right? Because you can't get a window because the people in your community won't vote to approve to fix the window, right? And I'm going to stop short of saying anything too harsh on that, right? You take that a step further, we have students who, again, a large portion of our student population are either economically challenged, right? Which, let's call it what it is, they're not getting fed at home. The school is the place they come to to be warm, to be feeling good about themselves, and the people in their community won't vote to give them a place that has a heater in it, right? I'm preaching to the choir here. The people who show up at these meetings are the ones that understand this, right? So what we've got to do, we've got to get more people to come out, right? I would bet anything that people who didn't come out and vote, and a lot of people that voted no, have no clue what we're talking about right now. They have no clue about the things that we talked about tonight. They have no clue that there's duct tape on the windows. They just don't know, right? Art did single-issue meetings, and I went to the first one, there were like seven people there, right? That said, right? And that means that we've got to do a better job of letting people know, and that's something that we'll have to consider and think about doing in the future. I know I'm going long here tonight, but bear with me. Next topic, board members, okay? Board members, us, future board members, you really got to think about, A, why you're doing this, and B, you are held to a higher standard of conduct, all right? You don't get to just go onto your social media platforms and start spouting whatever nonsense and crap you want to spout, right? You don't get to come to a meeting and say, oh, I have board member comments, so I get to just spout off any crap that I want to spout off. It's not the way that this works, right? You're held to a higher standard. You have to hold yourself to that standard, right? Here I am, getting emotional, but we've all got to think about what we're doing and what's happening out there. So I encourage everyone, present and future, to do that as well. The last part is, you know, throughout this process here, we're talking about putting together a budget. I hope everyone understands that a 2% tax increase is eaten up by the living adjustment within the 85% of the salaries and benefits. So with that said, you take the other 15% of your budget, which is everything else, and you have no money to do anything. So you're essentially losing money on those items. If the cost of paper goes up, if the cost of oil goes up, if the cost of anything goes up.
When?
Right? You just kind of monitor your own household. Those costs are all going up. You don't have any money to be able to facilitate those increases. So what do you do, right? You're essentially starving and going broke as an entity. So there's something that has to be fixed in this process that, quite frankly, people at the state level and way higher than me need to start thinking about figuring out how they're going to fix it because we can't do it. But that's something that for people who like to speak up and get involved in stuff, do the math, right? And you'll see, the math just doesn't work, right? And that could be part of the reason why, you know, buildings are falling down all over the state, probably all over the country for that matter.
Forget about bridges.
Yeah, that's right. The deck is stacked. All right, on a more positive note, these guys are getting their teeth kicked in. They're working hard. I appreciate them. I can speak for my peers. Everybody appreciates them. We got a gem over here in this guy. This is the coolest thing I've ever seen. Every month, this guy comes in, and I hear more things about what he's doing, and I'm more and more happy and impressed, and I bet you that there are a lot of students just like him in the schools, right? He's setting an example for future people, and it's a good place to be, right? Thank you, Carrie. You're working your butt off for us, and thank you to everybody in the community who cares, even the ones that don't. Let's get you caring, and to my peers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.